All right, good morning everyone. We call to over the March eighteenth meeting at the Madison County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chris Wallace. Everybody introduce themselves for the record. Tony Sinikus.
Brendan Shay.
Rob Slane.
David Kow.
Don Swain, you were true.
Bron DeMayer, Tom Burke.
Amy Reese Clark.
Thanks everyone. Everyone should have received a copy of last week's meeting minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any other discussion? Dan Perd, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Sher.
Morning. Hope they had a wonderful weekend again. I don't have any items of business for your honorable board this morning. I do want to bring you up this feed on expenditure that had to be made. I spoke to county manager Mr. Slane last week. Couple of years ago when I started using that traveling travel line, he indicated that we would make sure that you knew when members traveled unless we had extended circumstances. Last week we had extension circumstances. I had to send a couple detectives on the follow-up in person, airfare, and around Florida. But well within the budget of the travel lines, so just wanted to bring it to your attention. That's why I was brought. People were pretty quick. Other than that, business as usual. Last year honorable board had anything to me this morning?
Oh sir, thank you, appreciate it.
Copy, hang on a sec.
Long time, thanks. Thank you, sir. Brian?
Yeah, sir.
Oh, good morning.
Morning.
We do have a bid recommendation for our trucking business received last week. So you can keep your back on the note during any time and if you don't have it, then actually go ahead. Just a couple of days. Broker's been doing quite a few road repairs out there the last couple of weeks. This winter was pretty hard, this level of our weaker roads. So they're out there repairing damages with Kurt Bachelor and whatnot. And as soon as the supply flights are open, we'll be out there on some spot dating and that sort of thing as well. The thing too, if you've been by the fairgrounds in the last week, we have been doing some grading and drainage work there with the infield where the horse track used to be. They will use, the horse track is, they don't utilize that anymore. So we're just, we're helping the fair board grade that out and make it more usable. These are real estate and then making some repairs to the drainage system out there. To get any questions, I just want to make clear we're not changing any of the drainage patterns. All the water is going, equaling to the same location. And we'll be respecting that, just preparing the drainage system that's there. So just wanted to give you guys a form of the activities taking at the fairgrounds.
Very good.
On some of that, business as usual.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Sir Slane?
Yes, sir. All right, here. The only thing I have for the board today is consideration for the Mid-Ohio Madison County Joint Project Agreement whereby the counties would agree to pursue the PTI and PPS permits using our existing two oh eight authority for the regional wastewater treatment plant and associated force main. And you could authorize the county administrator to sign if someone had to move forward with that today.
Just following up on what they presented last week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nick looked at it. It was all good, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't really see any problems anywhere with anything, so. I think they're anxious to move forward with that, so we'll need to authorize the sign. Resolution.
I might have that on there.
Yes.
Yes, it's already on there. Want me to read it now?
If you will, please.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you.
A resolution approving the joint project agreement between Madison County, Ohio and the Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District and giving the county administrator authorities to sign.
Move to approve.
I will second Amy, the giving, Rob, the authority to sign. Is that in the, do you have the same one that we have? Is that in the title?
No, 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 I was just.
Okay.
It's like.
It's the same version.
It's the same version.
Yeah, which you tell me you guys can go ahead and sign it today if you like and then.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we had the same version.
Is it giving the county administrator unnecessary actions to implement the provisions of this agreement? So if there's anything for to, that needs to happen, I'll can take action on that. But you guys would sign this, but this resolution.
Either way.
Good, first and a second. Any other discussion? Dan Perd, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes. All you got, that's all I have for you, Jim. Unless you have anything for me? I didn't believe it, you were just talking. Yeah?
Nothing. Based on this week, next week I will be bringing three actionable items. The Taxary New Council met March seventh to review different reports for abatements and other incentives. Three that the county are, is involved with, which would be Vanderhags. Be the Smith Lane property, that's forty-two and twenty-nine. And then the first Jefferson Industries abatement from a few years ago will be brought into consideration. The full term recommended in all three board approval. So those will be props to you guys next week. The reports required to be submitted, same five hundred thirty persons. Same thing you do every year, same process.
Look, can you review that just for my benefit when you say that the same thing you do every year, that this is, these aren't new?
These are not. No, the two new ones, the TIF that's being, that was passed in Madison Gateway as well as in the Jefferson Industry, they're not kicking until next year. So you won't start reviewing those until the following year. These have been in the past. So these are put in place, I don't get the exact years, but I believe Jefferson Industries was, this first one was two thousand and eighteen. Vanderhags I think was two thousand and twenty. And then the forty-two, twenty-nine Smith Lane property was twenty, twenty-three, I think. So those were passed agreements that were passed. And then the two that were just passed recently won't get, start reviewing until next year because they haven't kicked in yet.
And what are you reviewing exactly?
So what they do is they submit everything every year. So based per the guidelines of the agreement, they fill out a report that provides information on jobs created, jobs retained, payable, as well as investment. And so that Tax and Survey Review Board will meet every year and review those documents to make a recommendation ready to approve or recommend to cancel. And that's not, it's a recommendation, it's a recommended body, it's not a final determination. So I think in all jurisdictions that have abatements or recommend for approval, Central One, West Jeff. And what happens is typically these agreements, there's a period of thirty-six months to sixty months. It's all agreement based where there's a ramp up period. So it's like basically, I don't want to call it, it's basically saying, hey, you have thirty-six months to get to your numbers. And then after that you will be heavily scrutinized to where if you don't need these numbers for a year, couple of years, then the local community will determine what they want to do. Whether it be continue, amend the agreement, or cancel the agreement. So, you know, so these, the Jefferson Industries and the forty-two, twenty-nine Smith Lane property, since those are fairly new, they typically have a period of, I'll check the agreements, but I believe each is thirty-six months to ramp up and get those numbers. And then that's when they start getting more heavily scrutinized. That makes sense.
Yeah, so all three of these have met the.
Correct, yeah.
So far?
Correct, yeah. So I'll have a report for you guys next week. You'll see, then you'll be able to, and I'll write a recommendation for the term as well.
Thank you. If you could send the report ahead time.
Absolutely, yeah. My plan is by Thursday.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, absolutely. And like I said, this is every year we've done this, nothing different. And I'll have the Smith report to stay by thirty person. Thank you. Give that explanation, sir. No problem. We're about to take a brief coffee break.
You went down to the news center. I've not seen the news center yet in Athens. The BNC just told me they were building a magnum on the city, the sheriff's office.
Yeah, they've always been central dispatches since the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. It was, it was quite impressive.
Was that their council? Did they give you tour? Was that their council areas or not one more council area?
They have five there and it's expandable.
Okay, yeah.
They have, they're gonna five, but if the county grows, if they need more, they can kind of configure it. I know right now there's just five.
You're gonna look at their desks or?
Yeah, thank you.
The first one I went to was twenty years ago. I think it was Hamilton County. Down south, I believe. And, you know, that would be on Butler, which probably. Valerie. Yeah, they had a little bit cutting and everything for it. I was like, this makes so much sense. Yeah, but never really could convince anybody to go.
It's so hit and miss though. It's like, a majority of the chairs.
Yeah, but like Warren County. There's something that should have raised, not, but all. You know. Yeah, they have. County line, emission ring, dying. Maro County. Was, was on commissioners and ran by. I, I respectfully don't say. Changed all that.
It was, I mean.
Yeah, the, the email.
You guys might know that these buildings have to be built that way, but it's about twelve million. We were in San Francisco, the drywall, the doors were roller proof.
It's the building tornadoes.
Up to two hundred some mile an hour winds. And then the generator, we read that for the nine-one-one. It'd be, it should be all ready, all electric and fiber is what's the last just started.
Well, I'm surprised that. I was surprised if the generator stands alone. Is it in the city? Like where they have like.
The planes.
You have to put those little dots on there even like, so they don't have like massive gas.
I mean, it was when they also, there was housing.
You know, it was just odd that they would have a seventy-two hour generator back there. You know, like when ours was, I go back up, what's with your thoughts? The actual gas that is like. We remember, I don't know, assuming the time we lost natural gas. You know, because everything, all the infrastructure is.
And the floor, which is, I guess, normal. I saw something on, have somebody else talking about it on TV, but all the, under the tile. So you can move the tile around. So if you didn't want to stand here, you could just move it over there. They just built the new place for the ambulances district and they're getting it. Department of General Family Services, something for children's thing. So we don't have characters. Doing well. Two R O U on a school bus.
What's that?
Got the two R O U on a school bus.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, it's pretty, coming to college, I knew my son went down to that college three years. I always host the, I just wonder if we could, you know, Sheriff Smith. Yeah, I don't know why, when I, they do buy. Somewhere, the two, right, around the state, so Athens, so always hosting. But we always did the, right, and also new kinds of, I told her, it's out there, it's a big problem. So I just kind of wondered now, you know.
Oh, sure. The nine-one-one was shared, right, not shares, was shared. Commissioners to bone, but it wasn't a share, they actually. Yeah, I don't.
I don't, I don't know what she's saying. Get the sheriff over seeing, that's why I said, I don't think I said just.
I just said, I never.
I think they were, they planned, they did dispatch at that, it's hard.
They were thinking that they were, like, after, next week they were gonna start, so they. The drive.
So on the scene.
But she didn't have any.
Family's practice, so it's family's practice, it's like.
That's quite the. Like, I don't know, it has to generate. Room for the ten hours, like the little floor or something. Two, two or generally, two was like three calories.
So, but that explains it.
That does.
But was the park still where? Holy hood, they said. Huh? And you got nice. But this.
Still got the question of that, still, I was trying to do Cleveland too, so. I was just a little while ago, I think, I was wondering. Hello, we liked it in the journals before, also. This thing, I guess, all these sponsors for better. That's, I like, I keep them all, so I don't want you know. It's just so. You're talking about on forty, like the monkey go hard.
Hey, let me check on all of them. I just left them here.
Yes, we have four.
Yeah.
Not as much here, there, we will.
I need to watch.
Yeah, you gotta bring up that, I don't have to get out your phone, you did your business, so.
All right, we'll start back out. Amy, Google it, please.
A resolution approving the payment of invoices for the Mass County Auditor.
So moved.
Second. Kristen, second. Any other discussion? Dan Perd, roll call please.
Brendan Shay, Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution regarding the Board of Commissioners' response to the liquor permit application for the cheese house.
So let's discuss that, so it's in the recording.
You can choose to not have a hearing and be okay with it.
Did they say what they were gonna say?
It was carry out.
Carry out.
Until two AM, but I doubt that they're gonna do that.
Yeah, they close.
Hear anyone until two AM.
Hear anyone.
So our options with this resolution. We, we pick one of these options, right?
Right, if you don't have a problem with it, then you say you don't need a hearing. And I actually signed the form and sent it back. If you do have an issue or you want more information, you can decide to have a hearing here, you know, here in Columbus. Or you can request a third of the extension to consider it.
Resolution says one, one A and.
Oh, does it?
Have an issue with that. From nobody, who should.
A move to approve.
Second, and it would be, so we would just select, the board does not object, right? So that's what we're approving.
Yeah, and waves the rights of a hearing.
Yep.
Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? Dan Perd, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving the Madison County twenty twenty-four CDBG direction discretionary grant participation agreement with the Mass County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? Dan Perd, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution approving the final wage compliance reports for the CDBG projects.
So moved, second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution accepting all biz for trucking services for the engineers.
So moved.
Second. First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing Deputy Jack Dill to purchase his issued service weapon upon retirement.
So moved.
Second. First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving travel authorization for the Madison County Auditor's Office to attend the Auditor Summer Conference twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Do you have a travel thing?
I do.
And I, please guys sign.
A resolution approving the transfer of funds for the Mass County Family Council.
The move. Second.
First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution acknowledging the budget adjustment of seven hundred and fifty dollars from evidence-based probation to the parent project within the fiscal year twenty twenty-five County Felony Delinquent Care and Custody Grant.
So moved.
First and the second. Any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Dr. Sinikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
I also want to discuss the BMV lease. I want to bring that to you if it's okay next week so she can have it for her. Continue franchise.
In reply to that amount that I sent. It's been a subject we've discussed in the past and at that point in time, we basically said no parking, but no parking signs. They went back to parking there.
How frequently do we need to access that?
It's, it's pretty regular, but yeah, it's a, it's a daily thing. It's, it's another space that we use on regular. That's the only one with overhead fuel.
I mean, I don't care if they park there, but if they need to move and they're busy inside, then our people can't get in there do what they need to do. That's the, I mean, I was in there to get my tags a couple of weeks ago and, you know, I waited probably ten minutes. Because we were busy, so I, I don't know if they're gonna jump up and run outside to move all those vehicles.
How often would maintenance be blocking the way at the end of the day if they wanted to back up their vehicle so they're closer?
Yeah, so maybe close at five or five-thirty, we close at four. So that would be open for them to move their vehicles over to that spot after four o'clock.
It seems like a very reasonable. They wouldn't be leaving before then with, with their money bags.
I mean, as far as security goes, I didn't talk about that. So they have the reasons for doing it and that's fine, but I think the reasons can be addressed at four o'clock.
And that is in the lease. That that is not renewed.
Send her and we'll, we'll hold off until she talks.
Then if.
I mean, our lease, our lease says that on there.
The new lease.
Okay, well, we could sign it because I think we're in agreement with that, where you need to go.
And then Amy said, I'll have it next year.
Next week, I was just, that, what I was, that and, and the cost. And it looks like per square foot, we're on target for what she's.
So I agree with that.
So to next week I'll have it through first.
That works.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Aaron, is there anything you wanted to discuss?
At this point, the less I say, the better.
Thank you.
That's good. It's like good to recognize that sometimes.
But that was good to be here.
Good.
It's become.
I think there's one in here that everybody has to sign.
It's good.
Yes.
And you're sure.
Hi there.
Hey, Bron, I'm thinking about it. Have you guys paid the most recent ditch bond? Yeah, to bench one of bond council. Maybe a month first.
Two years ago.
January thirtieth, this one. I sent it over to you guys, so. She just. I'm sorry.
They're signing it as a.
Well, they're saying check the records to see if.
Right. I'll check on it.
Cool, thanks. I'll forward it later, so. I know Carol will come after me.
Okay, whoever's gonna watch this live, there is some good entertainment.
I mean.
Yeah, it must be very, very, very good. Very, very, yes, to watch it. All the production going on.
It's literally just like watching the grass grow.
Yeah, I'll take this, man. I'll take this over, I'm gonna need to examine it, so. Take the word for sure. We need to send.
There's gonna be a remodel.
I think there's one that needs to.
Well, yes, yes. I'll probably, you know, just have it sometime, yeah. Absolutely, yeah. Exactly. Exactly. Yeah, talk about this is yeah. Remember, it's just went through the roof.
Infowars are all ditches.
Being drained makes me good to be, right, well, these lives are draining, so we don't even go out to the.
Share that footage, give them the good first, I have the news online with that. You see, I think it's why that drug around this courthouse, it's political. If we figure out how to weapon. We have sergeant scan clear that, fire me.
They can blow torch maybe. I don't think so.
We can't get it, it's a little more sense of it.
He keeps pushing west, Jeff, crazy, we're just. So. It's really different. People don't like the people.
You ever seen the.
Much too, much too. Receive all the.
Hawk, yeah, the hawk's little. Maybe. Who's who's. But it's evolved from ADA. Other items, so.
Yes, sir, can we put some fake hawks around them?
We try and house.
Does work.
We try and house.
Hawk.
Maybe, I don't know. As soon as I get used to it. You gotta move around.
I'm not very hot, so I'm.
You're designated. Now, like when you go, like somebody's got by the water, they've got the coyote, you know, for the geese and they need the coyote, they're like, will you move your office up there?
It'd be great, I have a window at five.
Yeah, it's just true.
It's hard to see daylight up there.
There's a nice deck out there. Flat roof done.
Good little table. You'd miss me.
As I said about.
If you had that location, probably wouldn't get too many cranky people.
It's true.
They'd be cranky down there.
If they are.
Crazy pigeon lady.
If you are, you just push them over, right?
So. When when do they normally burn the site? Is it now or?
It it can be now, I do know that um. It's conditions are right, I think they try to avoid.
Right, I mean, you know, after the nest, it has to be now or after the nesting season, right, or?
Right, and they don't like to do in the middle of summer.
Right.
Dry conditions.
Yeah. I seen a guy do his own. Just the old cars, you know, it's just one good. I would think that would be good, wouldn't it? Would it kill a lot of the?
Yeah, like this would be like.
Stuff that over breed, that over winter.
As they spend time here, it's a, you know, right now they do have a burn permit for the dairy preserve. But then you have to have the great wind condition.
Oh, sure.
Pretty gusty days.
Oh, yeah.
And so of course sometimes like, okay, you can do it, and then suddenly it does rain that one day, and you're like.
There's hiccups here.
But yes, this is the time to do it, like we are in the season of burning.
So get hot enough to kill the overwintering. Uh weeds.
So I think the challenge is if you need enough grass materials to get that heat, otherwise, like we tend to, in the past, probably with too many flowers. And enough grass, so. But it can, but then if you don't kill something off, you just come back and cut it and spray it. There's a lot of these are fine, like that bottom model was starting to crop up, easily. Um take care of it.
It's their buggers, yeah.
Yeah.
He's like your company can weird some. You know, brush under the electric, you know, poles. And. They left it in the field. How am I supposed to do it in the field? They need a phone call.
Contering.
They 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 sent a letter saying they're gonna be there, I didn't see them there, I'm not there.
Probably supposed to try and chill currently.
They didn't.
Those are their contracts do that.
And then they're talking trees, they're vegetables, they're not cutting up.
Do you have the contact?
Uh, no, excuse me. I mean, it's gotta be a highway to say. I was gonna make a nice phone call. I'm gonna go, I think we just take one of those machines and just. Eat the leaves away.
I didn't call Judge Cross anyway, I'll tell them else like asking.
Yeah. They have those that just they did multiple.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm not talking about there, I'm talking off six, eight, five.
That really goes across trouble down here.
Yeah, for six months. Yeah. And I called him, I said, are you gonna get that out of there? They said, oh, yeah, we will, once, we can. I said, what about the rats? Oh, we'll fix them. They don't. And you take a truck in the swamp, it's gonna sink. CR, it's like a meeting, we have a drone utilization demonstration on the agenda. Newark Police Department.
Newark, New Orleans?
Yeah, where they had in that.
Sure, they've done a pretty good drone program.
Grandville. Grand.
Chat. What's that? Chat friends.
They do, I'm there, they don't very well, they found. Try to discourage people from using them, ours, very expensive.
Also, you had that challenge.
Not yet.
Not yet.
On what, but you're not.
I hope you don't.
No.
Yeah.
Maybe not get work that well for them.
I was just seeing a news article the other night. The other evening about. A discussion on all the unidentified flying drones and where they're coming from and.
Right, we had a a box written with silent. And I had a couple sightings and then all the shit being on the metal roofs. I mean, very, very ability, sounds good for avoiding all these drones and choose.
They got them for the.
Wherever.
They're sitting there, they're in the yard, flying, we're not being heard.
There is big water, very awesome, there's family size, like go over, you know. Sometimes during, you know, sometimes during.
Yeah.
You have a big foot joke.
A low flying big drones makes everybody want this.
Well, so maybe you've obviously been to a long time to review. Some of these agriculture drones are, I mean, they're the size of that table.
Yeah.
And if they're working with them. Trying to plot the farm or whatever, you know, I could see people like, oh my gosh, it's a. Huge metal, you know, cause they're so big.
Yeah.
But. Directly decide false move, trying to. You know, make a difference between. That or somebody's going on or. Well, but for these, for aerial spraying, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff, so. They have the setup on the trailer, they have three, I'm gonna say three of them. They like.
Can't remember.
They break them in and they got tanks and they. They all they got the, if they're, they come back, recharge, refuel. Fill up, drop more, I mean that. Driving a tanker, or a, you know, spray. Vehicle, some of them are.
Yeah.
I I.
There's less ground impact if they do that.
I've been made, I'm not fault, and that's a good point. Yeah, yeah, that's what I said, they, that way they're not ruining crops, but. But it's false, I don't know, I mean, they're not cheap. They're not cheap, I don't feel so.
They're able to be more. Specific as far as words, sure.
Yeah.
Have to feel very, in a very detailed manner as far as word.
For some of them farming, yeah. I still like the little weeds out of the place with the.
That's pretty else.
That was. Have you seen that, that incentive using a herbicide? That it has lasers and it burns it. Burned out, yeah. Don't wear your flower hat that day.
Goes down the road, treat the corn and and gets rid of the weeds just.
Yeah.
The robot mowers do.
And it sets us a mower magically?
I think it's just running something, that's really good.
Okay.
Fashion spare over. Less invested. Still waiting.
Flying car though. Flying car.
Flying car, yeah. I was watching some V movie. Of Sunday. In the eighties. And but it was futuristic, they were like, it's twenty seventeen. They they mentioned a year that the movie was supposed to be taken place in and. Pretty much, it's pretty far out there. Well, I mean, I mean, there's, there's some agencies that, I don't know, let's go prototype in there. Uh drones, building their P A S B, they're public, they're nine one ones. And they get a nine one one call and they're automatically deploy to that area, starts video and. Let's first responders know what they're coming into and the the video's fed right into the nine one one servers to the dispatcher.
I think Hillier's doing that.
I hear he probably is doing that, they probably have the money to do that.
Yeah, that last meeting we talked about.
And they're right, they're deploy ready, deployable and. Either double iris fuss, I mean, they've got them pretty much in a grid, this pattern.
Yeah.
They ju- they just hover right there, they don't, they don't hardly really move and then they'll seem to swap out every now and then, must be. Batteries get low or something like that. Uh one comes in, one goes down. I can kinda shift off the drone program, it it it's a really. Really neat. Operation, uh their drones can. Can be flown from multiple locations, so. They got something major that the drone has to fly, further the multi communication of the. One that, you know, they can position people in the county, pick up that drone, continue its operation. And I mean. For longer, probably be satellite. Robo cop, yeah.
One, I used to be a kid, learn everything about electronics and figures out how to get in on that drone and redirect it.
Probably. I mean, I think that's where your firewall's gonna. Whatever software you're using to operate it, you know, it's just like a computer, you're building, you know, building those. Firewalls in front, but they don't get hacked, I mean. Like everything else.
We've got a gentleman that attends our church, he's now in his thirties, but when he was eighteen, he. Gave the story about. He was messing with things like. Visit from the FBI.
That could happen.
Yeah. And he said he didn't realize what all. Yeah, he was just having fun.
Yeah.
He learned quick though.
They get a call from the FBI and.
Just like. I'd love to say it would continue. This still. I can't try to be perfect, I'll be like, should I see?
Well, generally do that, we'll give it a try.
I mean, we'll tie that little saw onto a drone.
Yeah.
Fly them and frame their truth.
I like it.
It wasn't really expensive either. Wasn't seeing, yeah, he goes, we had to buy it, I said, why?
Yeah. Obviously, collision.
What I use, use all the time, which are reciprocate saw. Uh that worked. It did, it did. I have it, but. I had it, yeah. Battery operated. It just took a while sometimes.
If you use the right blade.
Yeah, which I never did. I always use some dull piece of junk blade.
I've been in blades.
Serve a lot, to a true license.
Absolutely.
Like it was love for my conditions, they go through the process, but they just.
Oh, it was just. I mean, I had the big lockers, you know, and sometimes you're like, oh, I can cut through this with the lockers, it's like.
Your education and.
It's like, hell, it's like it's all.
Technicians that it's.
Like I said, I brought it, I thought. Not anytime soon.
Yeah, you could play the game a little bit, first, if you're never gonna fly.
You ask them. And they might not.
It's all true. It's possible, but it's just safer to have their.
No, yes, they learn.
So what's something in the garage again?
If we ever give it.
The couch, the couch.
That's pretty cool, like an exercise.
Oh, yeah, that's always like, you know, straight, I should, I don't know. Maybe it's. Yeah, someone gave it to me, I don't want to.
Someone was like, I need you to drive it.
Nah, I'm not just got like two weeks, it hasn't been that that long.
Inversion.
Yeah.
Oh.
They're doing it for. Might help you back.
Yeah, you told me it's a good idea.
Well, they could sell yours. So what you see. An aberration search. And it's a pile truck.
Uh you know, certainly good, big, good influence, I mean, have a Costco, they get toilet paper. Well, that's.
When you leave by cost.
Uh TP has highest. It gets TP houses like.
We do.
Too expensive to examine.
Yeah, I don't think it. I don't even expect it. So she didn't miss a fall. And I've never seen anybody that said that in touch, so you can turn your whole thing, make this a little bit, a little action, that's all.
You have, you have like some, maybe you're qualified by their small water. It's a little representative of.
Friends, they're.
We must see them for them.
That's cool.
Is it worth it, somebody start with them? I'm finally here on.
Alright. We will exit the commissioner's board meeting, now called to order the Madison County Park District meeting for Tuesday, March eighteen. Everybody should have received the minutes from the previous meeting and also a copy of the financial report. And move to approve both.
Second.
First and the second for good, for approved, the minutes and financial report as presented. Or any other discussion? Here in none, roll call please.
Mr. Shaq.
Yes.
Doctors Nathan.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes. Alright, we also have notes from Double Bond, Little Dargood Reserve Fund, about it, nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars and sixty four cents. Will now move to partnership reports. Who would like to kick us off?
Sir. From the engineer's office, thing one, uh here, we talked about this, I skated or not for that. We will have our, our time travel agent's worker back on board. The season, uh tentative league for first week in April, we're just kind of monitoring grass and. Uh so Tom will be back on board. With us to to handle those duties this year. Uh thing two, we do have a couple of dead trees that were uh getting some estimates on them and evaluating if we need to contract out for. If it's something our crews can can take care of. And then thing three, um. The bridge on Prairie Grass.
Yes.
We. Yeah, we need to do some uh some repairs, so we'll be back on on that. Another major, uh that's something that'll be uh handled this this season. Thank you, sir, that's all I can think of.
Yeah. Friends?
Friends, uh. Just to let you know, so far, we've had one camper so far this year, we camped the area, we've gone across country, it was way all white. All going forward this.
Okay, then try to run his bike there. And then you get.
Start, well, it's. Um, but our group had a, a successful Ben Jake and Tossy breakfast last weekend and going quite a few people at the asylum. They will accumulate a little bit to help with fundraising for the completed gap in the three O P town. Um also, uh our group is gonna be participating in the safety expo that's coming up on the April fifth over the fairgrounds this year. And we'll be in the Franklin Building and putting on bike rodeo there. And finally, just to let you know, the National Celebric Trail Day is coming up on April twenty sixth. And we're gonna, we'll be working together with the master gardeners, they're gonna be putting on a little uh event, little uh learning experience, we're gonna experience. Over at the uh Community Miracle Park and the credit group themselves, they'll be over on the. The other side of town, that's Prairie Grass Trailhead, working on the trail that they're getting cleaned up and ready for campers coming this year. So that's it for me.
Very good, thank you, sir.
So on water, um I'm on the interact committee and that's the National Resource Assistance Committee. And that is the committee that evaluates projects for the Clean Ohio Green Space Fund. So we have several million dollars for projects in our district, District eleven, and it mirrors the same. This is going to the high uh public works, um so it's the same one for Rose. Anyway, we have used this funds in the past, that's what, that's how we acquired the Robert's Pass Trailhead. And the friends acquired additional property, that's the London Bluffland. Someday develop that area into a park that school kids can come out and and look at the. The Waddles and things like that, but that's kind of how we've used the funds so far in Madison County. Um they have another funding round, it'll be July twenty fifth, this is next time that it's due, so if you have anyone who's interested in preserving green space, whether it's uh. Plain City, West Jefferson, this park board, um. We're here to help you navigate that grant application process. That is, again, available this year. And then I had brought up the Clean Ohio Trail Fund, uh but the project just wasn't in the ready enough position to apply this year. So they do have a timeline, you need to get the project done, and the project's just not close enough to get it done.
You were gonna look at a grant for. Sealing?
So that's the Recreation to Little Trail Fund, and we've not applied for that since we've switched over to the Fox Sealing Project because it's. So economical to do it on ceiling way, but I think you want to get that finished this year or. But it's. Basically, the price of the Fox in was what we used to pay for match for the recreational stuff, but.
Yeah, well, it wasn't any more money, so that's just.
Yeah.
Dispense of going through the grant process and then just buying it of the track group, so, yeah, you're right, we do have a third grad section that we've done this year. Now, you know, if if this group gets to the point where, you know, they prefer that type of application, then we've been, we've been reconsidered.
Yeah.
Very good. Right, moving on, we know old business, we'll move into new business.
So as we were talking, we talked last. And strategies. And the friends, I met with Alan and Jimmy to talk about. Uh these top ten strategies, because Jimmy was really interested in, what is this about, and how can we use this to our advantage? Quite happy for them. And it's, um, well, maybe I'll just run through with what we. The key things that we talked about, and you can kind of decide, you know. That's for, basically, this is for your information and um hopefully more conversation down the road, but. Last time it was brought up, should, you know, what ha- what's happened to ODOT Bridge? Um is it gonna be pedestrian bicycle friendly? And so Jimmy did look at the plan, and he's not happy that it's six foot on each side, he wanted to see one side full foot ride for the cross traffic. So, you know, my feedback to Jimmy was, you know, it's my understanding that Metro Parks have their opportunity to get input, um and so Jimmy said, please, gonna talk to Morcy because. Uh they should have often had input and try to understand how that design came to be the preferred design line. Uh we talked about improving the cop trail map, so just as a reminder, in the comp plan. There is a PDF that kind of says, here's some possible frail future things, and that's moved on through some public meetings with Morcy and some other aspects. But it is just kind of a vision and um there's a little bit of like, well, how realistic are some of these visions for these trails? Um we, you know, I'm interested in promoting a different path board. So I don't know how easy it is to change a PDF, I, you know, I don't think it is that easy to change it, it is just a vision, a a concept, a framework. Uh I think what'd be more useful is if there really is a sincere desire to create a path that's actionable, we really need it to be a shape file. That agencies can access for planning purposes. Um he, he did say, he talked to Morcy actually about, you know, getting this as a shape file, and he said that they would charge hundred fifty dollars an hour. He's a little concerned that they might not want to do the job because of it, this scene is competing with Franklin County Division for the Derby Trail. Um but, you know, we just kind of said, well, it's not a competition, you could have both trails, really, it's just an alternative to this idea. Of course, you know, my question would be, well, maybe this is something Madison J S could create, the shape file. So I guess that's kind of something we'd like to explore is creating a shape file. I mentioned internal versus external, having a plan on the map can be a two edged sword, you have some people who be super excited and think it's a promise and it's gonna happen tomorrow. You could also have some people who would be angry to see their property being accepted with a proposed trail, even though they're not gonna own the property forever. Right now, in this space of time, they would not want a trail going through the property, so. Whether it's internal or external, but I think a shape file that is accessible to people who are trying to do planning would be very key. In case it's an opportunity that comes along, it can be identified, and we can talk to the developer about creating a trail. Um we talked about priorities, so, you know, this is very influenced by Jimmy, but I think Jimmy's um has some great ideas. Uh it's Wilson Road to West Jefferson, we, we do have a trail right now showing Lake Chalk Town coming to the trail, but he's like. In a bigger community and a more logical community to try to have a connection to. So I do agree, it's a weakness in our map that we don't show a trail going up to West Jefferson, he would like to see that happen. And he thought, well, State Route twenty nine is going to extend to US one forty two Wilson Road, that could be a pathway if it's a bike lane policy, so Jimmy said he's gonna talk to Ryan D. Uh about if there's any plans for that road to extend down to one forty two. Um and then, of course, in general, how can we acquire this wonderful land for the bike trails? Well, there's the Clean Ohio Trail Grant, the Park District can run a levy, we've been adopting open space policy. And then we also thought we should talk to Kevin Weaver, since he's formerly of Westville, to see if he had any other ideas, because we assume that he might be knowledgeable about all things. Uh trails, at least you have a little bit more knowledge than our group um on some of these topics. So that's kind of the brainstorming uh that we went through on this question.
On the math, so. Since we're going through the comprehensive plan revision now. Do you have any thoughts or did the group have any thoughts on what to do with the map for the new comprehensive plan? Did they think of just removing it because of the issue of it can be obsolete a year later? Changing it?
In my opinion, I think it's great to have some kind of resource like this, I do think one brainstorming session shouldn't change a map in the comp plan. I do think more time and inputs really needed to, before a plan becomes, I guess, adopted. But I do think a path board would be, hey, you know, Jimmy said, you know, talk, Jimmy should talk to West Jefferson and see if they're truly interested, you know, are they, would they need us in the middle on this? I think some more conversation should happen before we put the. Put plan on the map, but something to get started would be that shape file to kind of start the conversation.
When you say comp plan, are you talking the comprehensive land use plan?
Yeah.
Or you have a.
No, this is the.
Comp plan for the trails.
No, this is, no, the, you're talking, right now, the only document I'm aware of is the comp plan, land use plan. But it happens to have this map in there, so it's something I'm looking at to say, okay, here's a resource, if I was. Coming in this county, I'd like to know what we're thinking.
Yeah, we have a great way to study as well.
Which I do still need to get back from you, keep forgetting to ask you.
Yeah, I thought we had.
Thank you, appreciate that. So we'll, yeah, I think we'll discuss that too.
Well, there are two questions to you, it'd be similar to. Future roads that we could want to see as, as development efforts, we could identify. Future trail locations of that, as development does of rural missed parcels. It is known that this is part of, this is designed in the comp plan, it's been. You've gone through some, some vetting process for.
Yeah. Well, you're pretty interesting, good points, like, is this map beneficial, I see some value in it, but it can also be a distraction, so I get that I don't really have a strong opinion of whether or not this map stays as is in the plan or. But did help us spur our conversation, so in my sense, it is doing its job, it's spurring our conversation. But a more useful map for me would be a shape file, because that's more dynamic and I can access the. Um on a parcel scale. Like so much Jimmy's ideas, like there's a transmission line, well, people don't like to live under power lines, but I've definitely seen trails built under power lines and. So, but I have no idea what these power lines are, I'm not, you know, I'm not out there every day, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, essentially, those are shape files, it's just your PDF right now. So, I mean, it would be hard to create or grab from the greenery studies uh those shape files.
Right, I just assumed that this came from an out third party and you didn't have, like, ownership rights, or you'd have to, like, talk to the person who made this map.
I mean, that's. Again, I apologize, I'm not sure if you're looking at our comp plan, the language plan, yeah, so that's all ours.
Okay.
Yeah, so, in case, it shouldn't have those.
Yeah, we could.
And they brought in.
Yeah, we.
And I do think we would, would like an opportunity to maybe give some feedback on that particular topic, because I know the comp plan is being looked at just to find. Come up with a better. Okay.
Anything else, good new business for discussion?
Well, it transitions us into open space policy, uh which is my current um interest. In exploring further. Um because I sit on the subdivision review board, uh we have subdivision regulations, there is a place in subdivision regulations where we've been describing open space policy. So what we did is we reached out to, we call it our urban network committee, the small water districts have uh people like Emma and other counties that review construction site plans and things like that. And we've got uh responses from Delaware's Planning Commission and Cuyahoga's uh Planning Commission staff. Saying, if you want to have our conversation, we'd be happy to talk to you about our open space policy. So I'd like to know from you is, you know, what kind of questions would you have from a county perspective for the regional planning commission staff? And if anyone wants to be invited to this Zoom meeting, positive meeting, since it's Cuyahoga. Um to talk about open space policy, so if we had some questions that you want to learn about, I'd look, I'd collect them from you, if you want to participate in the meeting, I would make sure you got invited.
So you're gonna be meeting with Cuyahoga County?
I, I think the regional planning commission staff.
Like there's. Regional planning, so, oh, Cuyahoga?
Yeah, and then Delaware, I just have a phone number for him, so I probably just would be doing a phone call to the. Whoever this, their staffers.
But how'd that come about with, with Cuyahoga, because I, I wouldn't think we would be too similar.
I think with these different um regions of Ohio, it's just a way of, um, it's just exploratory, and learning how things are done in other places can. Help think about things in a new way, you might discount some of the stuff they do because you don't think it does apply, but I think the process of open space planning is kind of. Fat formulative, but I think there's a process that you can think through that that's kind of what these question, and how has it benefited, like, to me, it's like, has this policy helped you? Did something happen that you wasn't expecting, so it's kind of more of a, how practical is this policy and did it do what you wanted?
Do you know, most of, most of those policies, do they use county money to acquire open space easements, I mean, I would think that's how it's done. I mean, I know Grandville Township, for example, has acquired a number of open space easements, but I mean, they're paying people, they're compensating people for those open space easements, I mean, that can be an expensive policy.
Right. How are you paying for this?
General fund, but you have to say. I'm pretty certain that's how they're paying for it.
Right, and, uh, but like, yeah, and I think, uh, yeah, you are allowed to quote unquote charge to the developer, um, like they're required to either provide park land for a certain number of people or if you're not giving that park land to pay money in lieu of that. I think that's another way of funding these things. But I guess you can require a reasonable amount of open space. I can't say you have to do X number of open space. There's a way of figuring out what is reasonable and, and require it, but, um, anyway, I guess I would like to know their process for what is your criteria for open space? Like I said, is it? It kind of, it sounds like they recently revised theirs, so I think they're more about why, probably about why they made the changes than they did. Because they had a lot longer than, so they even actually go through a revision. So they've had open space followed for a long, they're revising it. But that's why I'm kind of excited, this topic, somebody who's been around a long time with it. And Delaware, as you know, just a bit of less growth, um, and they're our closest neighbor. But this is the convenience factor of being right next door. They're, that's having a call.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to see how both of those may be handled differently, uh, and what kind of requirements are. And I think that can be very formative for us as we update the comprehensive plan.
So I think basically, I think that's a good question, how do you pay for it? And, um, and for me, it's going to be more about the process, like what's your criteria? So that's kind of what I'm thinking about when I, when I think about open space policy.
Very good, any questions for Julia? Okay, is there any other business to come before the park board? All right, our next meeting of the park board in Park District will be April fifteenth. So now, adjourn the park board meeting and resume the normal session.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'm a little unclear about this, our comp trail, map plan, um, how is going to find the remaining trackers from that? And that time, I should, you know, share with the friends, put feedback, and then order to. Think about, we were presented with different topics, let's go and share them. Here's some ideas for how we can update our trail map and see what they think.
Yeah, that works. That works.
I think it's because I need to realize.
That makes sense.
I'll take down, I'm, I'm gonna see if my budget might be. So I think we're reading some of that, but you don't have to call your exterminator.
It's weird.
Yeah.
A few, that one's, of their, uh, things. Doesn't like your face, Kim?
Does not.
I don't know, I said, care, so.
It's probably the best.
That's a truck.
Yeah, certainly. Is there?
Isn't. I say it's an, I listen to, I listen to, I'm a director, I need some time to turn the glass off.
We are a live stream.
You're very, is what you're saying, lies?
More than lies.
Sorry, Sam. Yeah.
You know, I, he could sit down.
You might want to go through my ears, so you can.
Sorry. All right, I feel bad.
And it's really okay.
But, true. We do the caption, you can type shit.
Well, my kids actually like.
I know.
And so, we have, well, I'm like taking off, so that it's just not.
So, I just, I won't take it, it's so much. Then, then it's you, you survive, that's your conflict, and you said, how are you surviving?
Survived.
Mr. Chair, if you was ever. Maybe, maybe you'll.
That's what I would tell you. Does he tell everything, because he seems to be here.
Trust you.
I don't know, that's intentional. I saw him earlier this week. Well, that's in yesterday, but today's only Tuesday.
That's always your message this year.
It's always yesterday, or Friday, I don't know, almost.
How long has your?
It must have been, like, pounds this year? I think.
Is he done?
He just, he just, he doesn't have to, this is, this is.
Is he done with this, or is he K K?
Oh, I don't know. It's good, but, but, enjoy something, it's gotta be in the crins to enjoy that I think that.
It's been two years, that's not.
Didn't last eight or nine.
It's been those two years, right? You said twenty.
This is a city that's in South County.
Yeah, everything, like, make some calls today.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call.
The whacking's boss, but they're not, they're still wearing.
This is constantly being recorded, by the way.
Okay, so.
We have nothing in Australia, we feel we're so. Right, it's, uh, like, anyway. It's been a lot of shit, but, but wonderful, yes. You say that wasn't.
It's been, I mean, you can, it's, it's.
The beat with it. You can, you know, you go off and on.
It's great, it's just something that you. Different mistake. Oh my God. Like, if I had, um, we had a spot in my floor, it was just a magnificent, so to die.
This, I think, hold on for now, because I'll talk, I think, I'm, 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 there is, there is. There's going to be a way to do it, I mean, I hope this can sort of, yeah.
That's the important, I don't know, but there's no, like, one that, just, hang on, they're, that's, here. I've done it, it's just a little, it's like, it's like. It works, so. Well, I'm glad to do it, it's a, there, but, you know, I don't know. I don't know, I just know about two minutes.
I think you can just go off and on with the live stream and, for you too. So it'll just say.
Just, I don't want to get too complicated, trying to do it. Yeah. You're in local need, so you really can't just turn off, just not say something that you don't want to hear, right? So I don't, kind of, of taking it how, unless you're gonna, exactly, that's what the means.
Yeah, you want to, then the defense company, well, it's a little dusty, it's a good thing, so.
It's really not part of.
You gotta have water, you gotta smell.
Exactly, actually.
I mean, the, the need hasn't been generated.
The essentials.
I need.
So, that's not part of anything.
It is.
Okay, if you have to do, people can still, or, or, or.
All right.
You can't be come out.
Of course, thank. Thanks, Matt. Thank you, State Board of Education, Department of, and, and.
All right, good morning, everyone. This is the time that we had to decide, it's on, uh, Bay and Madison Transit. We'll turn it over to all of you, thank you.
Well, thanks for taking the time to, to see us, um, the whole, I was here, it has worked hard on this. Um, it, it was a long time coming, it was, it took a while to get things started over here. But, um, I, I wanted to tell you that the, um, the first day, the first week that we started, um, our, our driver who has, has driven most, the more trips than anybody else, he took four, he had four trips in a day. And he's now transporting fourteen to, and he did that in four hours. And now he's transporting fourteen to twenty one in the same four hours. And so we are, it's growing every month. Um, I probably posted four hundred, I think, this month. Um, I don't know, and I think I'm getting this, have you been getting?
Um, we shared a recent, uh, newsletter, but I've not sent anything.
Okay.
Recent, so if you want to pass that over, that's a big one.
Yeah, the first, um. The, we started at two hundred and three trips, um, in July, when we first started. And then last month, um, we were at three twenty nine, but that was February. And it was, the weather was bad and, and it was, no, I'm sorry, it was four, four fifty five. Uh, the January, we were at five, five thirty two. And, um, so, that doesn't sound like maybe a lot, but it, it really gets starting. It took us, they had a long time to get to those new numbers. And, um, we were kind of running passive right now, um, with, with the drivers that we have. So, um, we have, I, I ran some numbers yesterday and realized that we have actually served five hundred and sixty one undelocated passengers. So, um, that's how many people are using the system. And we, when we looked at, um, the need in Madison County, Morcy actually headed that, that assessment out. And they thought that we had zero need in West Jeff. And we are in West Jeff every day. Um, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of seniors over there, um, that are needing transportation. Um, the thing I'm working on now is, in West Jeff, and like I said, you have the falls there pharmacies. And so they keep trying to get to, to Franklin County to get to a pharmacy. And I'm trying to get the word to them that if they apply for fifty percent off, they can get to London for seventy five cents, so a round trip for a dollar fifty. And they can come here to a pharmacy, um, and it'd be a whole lot cheaper for them. So that's, that's one of the things that I'm, that I'm working on right now. Um, so, obviously, the big issue for us is the match money. Um, with public transit, we're required to come up with fifty percent of our budget. And, um, we have, uh, we've invited a dollar. And so, so that's a lot of money. So, I'm not asking you guys for this much money, I'm asking you to help me. Um, I'll, I'll take anything you want to give me. I'm asking you to help me to come up with it. So, um, we are, our goal is to look at Madison for twenty five percent of the match. We're not looking for fifty percent, we're looking for twenty five percent of the match. And, which would be under eighty nine thousand five hundred dollars. So I, 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 I feel like, um, I feel like I'm going to get some more contracts with the schools. We had to put cameras in our vehicles. And so that, that put us behind the timeframe that they can live, because they got some, uh, students that, um, need to get to other schools. Right now, I just signed a contract that we started yesterday with Madison Plains. And it's to get a young man to an autism school in, um, Dublin. So a few more of those, uh, kinds of contracts can help us get to that number pretty, pretty, pretty well. Um, so, um, that, that's kind of where the need is. Um, I will tell you that, uh, FTA and O, and ODOT are really pushing us to get, um, to, to get government money. They're, they're really wanting to see money come from, from government bodies. Because when we do contracts, that is also, that also means it's taking up time. It's taking up a driver for a specific person instead of the general public. And so they're, they're really pushing that way. Um, so I, you know, I want you to know that upfront, that they're, they're pushing. Um, but that's kind of what I'm looking at needing, um, in order for us to stay in Madison County. You know, we just, we've got to come up with match money. So, um, I don't know what kind of questions you guys may have, but I think things are going well. I, I, I'm getting good feedback from, from people. Um, it only, I've, I've only had two major complaints and they were, they both came out of seating apartments. Um, and, um, I'm not sure if I could stand to fall in my head in the middle of the street, those two individuals will be happy, but I tried, can you? Um, and, and I, I will tell you that they, they've had some trouble with the concept. Um, for example, um, we got started off on my backflip this morning because, um, she wanted to go to, uh, an appointment at the hospital and we took her. We gave her a car that had a phone number on it, we explained to her, you're in as a will call. So that means that you call us when you're done, we'll come back and get you. She got really angry because we never came back to get her, but she never called us. Nor did she answer her cell phone when we tried to call her. So we couldn't, that's that. Um, you know, those are just things you can't fix. Um, and, and both of the complaints that came out of there were, were, were those types of things. Uh, but we have, I have tried to go back and meet with them and, and, uh, you know, build relationships there. But other than that, I think we've, I, I, I've not had any other complaints. Um, but what kind of questions do you guys have, or what are you needing from me?
So the amount of funding we provide now is just zero, or?
Yeah.
If I could just throw in, um, I think what Fayette Madison's done has been incredible and we have gotten nothing but positives, with the exception of, I need evening and I need weekends. Um, I think it's impressive when Joy shares the numbers, how many people are using it for work? And, which is her largest, uh, population is the work category. And as we know, we have a lot of shift positions in Madison County. And those are the folks that we haven't been able to meet yet. The other big population are the senior citizens. Um, Medicaid can get transported through a different contract. Medicare does not provide transportation. So it is our seniors that are saying, I need to get to my doctor's appointment, that they have to figure out an alternative and that's where Joy's program can come into place. So I would hate to see the progress that we've made and the, the program go away because we weren't able to come up with, in my opinion, a small figure compared to what the service is provided. Um, and that's why we all, the three of us came today to show you how much we're in support of, of the transit and what do we need to do as a county. I'll also throw out there, we have been trying, Dan can speak to this, to get businesses to buy in, um, and to get the Jefferson Industries, that Amazon and so forth, to agree to pay a portion to get their employees back and forth to work. It was, did it as recently as, I understand, Thursday, cripples. Could not get anybody i- in the room and, uh, willing to, to pony up anything. I can't really speak to why, but.
It, it's been like that for years and it's, it's, they'll, they'll, they'll bring it up as an issue and then when you ask for that, they could shoot you, they'll say, wow, uh, they're having all around it. We've tried to get, uh, you know, and I know, Lindsay Turner, you know, she's done a great job with her role and she's, you know, talking to Coda, we've been working with Coda to try to get a, for a long time, a stop on Western North Stage of Franklin County somewhere, different bit, and maybe looking at, is there a way to kind of do a, uh, in between, between Coda and Fayette, Fayette, Madison Transit or some kind of, uh, another sturgis? So we're trying to get, create as best we can to meet the needs of the community through the resources and opportunities. So, Coda's been a long time, everybody said, why did Coda come over to Madison County? And that's a complex question, uh, you know, and, and it's a toss kind of died really early on when I got here back in fourteen fifty, because they talked about paying a levy on the ballot in Madison County. And that has been, just, pretty small, just, so.
Um, the ones that you transport to work, the twenty three hundred and ten, are they within the county or you pick them up from here and take them to Franklin or Union?
They're all, we pick them up, they, they live and work in the county. Uh, I have an assessment we're on right now. We, we had asked for a grant from ODOT to, um, to assess how we can better get people honestly to Jeffersonville because of the battery. And, um, so. And, um, so, um, I, but then that started before we moved into, before we expanded into, to Madison. So I asked them to, uh, include Madison. And they have just started the assessment with Madison. And, um, but what I, what, um, what I'm seeing with the phone calls that we get and the people that we're transporting is people from West Jeff want to go to the Dublin area. Coda has some money for, um, for some circulators. But, um, they want us to pick up in West Jeff and go to like, like, um, outward Wesleyan Mall was. Nobody wants to go there. So, so that's, that, that would be a foolish place for us to put our money because nobody wants to go there. But what they're, what they want to do is they, they're trying to get to Dublin. But what I'm seeing, the, the greatest thing, uh, I think is what we're seeing, we're, we're trying to assess it a little better is Sterling trying to get to Grove City. And Grove City is trying to get to the battery plant. So we're, we're, we're looking at that and seeing, is that, is, is that something that, um, maybe that we could work with Coda on? Um, because they do have money, but we still have to come up with match for that money and that, I'm not sure. Um, but I, I just, um, everybody's trying to get to the battery plant now. And, um, so, and they're, they're starting to, to hire, um, labor now. Like they just hired my grandson, so I know they're starting to hire laborers. Um, but, um, that, I, I think this assessment is really going to help us understand. The, they haven't sent me much yet, but this, this first little map I got was, this, this is just shows in between these orange lines is where there's actually jobs in, in Madison County. And so trying to just assess some of that stuff and it, it's amazing. I, I will tell you that I was shocked. I was in a meeting, um, with, um, other rural counties and with ODOT. We had some training the other day and, um, what I discovered is, is most counties are really trying to build routes for work. And both in Fayette and Madison, that is our largest number. So I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled with that, that we're getting to work.
How many drivers are in Madison County?
Um, so I have four drivers in Madison County.
Four?
And I am going to be interviewing another driver tomorrow.
What's the average, uh, salary for those?
We start them at fifteen dollars a night.
Do they work eight hours a day?
Uh, they work, uh, twenty to forty hours a week.
Twenty to forty, so two of them would be a full-time, so really two full-timers. So what's the cost of those four drivers in a year?
In a year? I can't imagine that, but I don't talk.
In a month?
I, I, um, but I will tell you that, um, the, the, at the forty hours, they're getting benefits.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I have to figure that.
So you've got three of them at fifteen hours?
I've, they're all at fifteen.
Per week?
Per week.
All of it?
One at forty, fifteen dollars an hour.
Fifty dollars an hour.
Fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, but. Okay, we've got four drivers. Some of them are part-time, only twenty hours. Hmm?
One is forty hours a week, three are ten, possibly.
That's sixty, right? That's a hundred hours a week invested in this county, right? Per week, okay.
Good one. Thank you. Um, did I hear you say your budget is one point five million? And then you said the a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and change would represent twenty-five percent?
Of the match. So our total match that we need is seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Seven fifty-eight?
We're looking at a hundred and eighty-nine of that. Eight, it was a hundred, twenty-five percent was like a hundred eighty-nine five.
In the total?
She can put something together that'll show one percent or something.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, those matches is different than my world's match, it's forty percent. I heard it's fifty. It's, it's a different world, what ODOT is likely to take the match. But she can get you something that would show exactly.
That, that's our, our double right here.
On those, uh, just real quick, on those drivers, is that five days a week or seven days a week?
Five days a week.
Five days.
But she hopes to expand it to evenings and weekends if we can.
I get it, but right now, as it stands, it's five days a week.
Yeah.
And that budget's for Madison and Fayette, so.
So, yeah, because that's the way ODOT does it, because it's one system. I have to report everything, so it's, it's crazy, but it's, it's one budget.
Do you have it broken down? So are you?
No.
Are you asking for the hundred eighty-nine just from Madison or between Madison and Fayette?
Hundred eighty-nine five was from Madison and then I had to give the remainder of the seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand from Fayette.
Okay, have they, have they committed anything yet?
Well, I've got some contracts over there, um, and I, and the commissioners have. Um, the commissioners gave me thirty, but I'm getting ready to meet with them, they're giving me more. So they're.
So if the money percent match, they're going to give you the seventy, the remaining seventy-five?
They're not, uh, they're not going to give me the remaining.
Like, we give twenty-five, they're giving seventy-five, is that what you're saying?
Percent, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and so I, I've not, I'm not asking you guys to give me a hundred eighty-nine thousand. I've got, I've got to get that in, in Madison. Okay, I've got to get that in. Whatever I get in contracts goes for that. Uh, right now, the only contracts that I have are the one from Plain City. And, um, it is to take a boy back and forth to Dublin School. Not Plain City, that is, that's the place. And I have, um, I have a contract also with, uh, I have a grant from, uh, it's not a contract, it's a grant from CO triple A. And it is to take, um, seniors sixty or older to out-of-carrying medical trips. And they maybe can be fifteen for Fayette and thirteen for Madison for the year. Uh, but that helps. Um, and that, that is a big need. I've had several individuals that have self-paid to go to, uh, out-of-county medical trips. Um, because they, they're not on Medicaid, so they can't get a trip on Valley. And, um, transportation. And then, um, in Fayette County, we have Title II footing, which does this, which pays for those same types of trips. But Title II's being used for something else, so.
So just to review high level, so fifty percent of the funding comes from ODOT?
Yes.
And then the other fifty is split roughly seventy-five, twenty-five, Fayette, Madison. And, and is that government fund, i- i- it's contracts basically? Or, or in, including government funding?
Yes, it includes, whatever, government funding, contracts, whatever I can get to come up with that amount. That might have to do.
And how did you come up with this seventy-five, twenty-five? Is that just a goal or?
That's a goal.
That's a goal?
That is a goal. Um, because we felt like that was a fair goal. Because, you know, we just kind of started over here, we're not running as many hours over here. Um, and so we felt like it wasn't fair to split it fifty-fifty, so.
And, and Fayette, is Fayette currently providing funds to this program? They've been providing funds the entire time, Fayette County?
Fayette County, um, this, this last year was the first year that the commissioners gave us.
That was the first?
Yeah.
So prior, prior to that, everything was being paid by contracts?
It was.
Okay.
Yeah.
It went Sugar Creek, correct?
And Sugar Creek was a large con, our largest contract. And obviously.
So those contracts have been no longer in place?
Sugar Creek's is not in place. So, um, Sugar Creek was a very, very long time contract. And there was a time when the government reimbursed them. And then they stopped reimbursing them, uh, because it was a lot of, of refugees. And, um, so then they had to come up with the allocated cost and they didn't want to come up with the allocated cost. And so they dropped the contract, also knowing that, um, hard times was coming quickly. So for the.
But this seventy-five, twenty-five doesn't take into account any contracts?
Right now, it takes into a- account for Madison County, it takes into account the CO triple A.
Okay.
And the contract that I have with, um, Madison Plains. Now Madison Plains is with the rest of the school year. It's a good contract, it's like eighteen hundred dollars a, a week. Um, so it's, it is a good contract. But the, um, I'm not positive of next year yet. There's a possibility we're going to have that student next year as well, which would be sixty-six thousand dollars of that hundred eighty-six.
So that's what, that's going to be my next question. So any of those contracts would subtract from our a hundred eighty-nine five?
Yes.
So the more contracts you get, the more you need, less you need out of our general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And the thing Joy's asked today is, now, it's not just a financial one. You know, it's also a get the word out one. You know, if you hear of anyone that needs contracts and things like that, all the schools, Buckeye Community School, different places like that because that's just reduces that one eighty-nine down that we have to, we need to come up with so that we can continue.
And if we give you one eighty-nine, you're, you're still going to make best efforts to get contracts?
Oh, I'm going to make best efforts because it.
But I don't want to give you the money and then we, we don't need contracts anymore.
Because once we have the one eighty-nine, I can hire and I can give you what you want on the weekends and the, um, on the weekends and, and extend the hours. Because what they're, what especially London is wanting us to do is to extend the hours the same as Fayette, which is five o'clock in the morning to midnight. And that takes care of those shifts. So the people that we can't get to work or we can't get them home now, we could. And, but I, I've got to have the money to do that. So, yeah, I'm going after those contracts now.
You said that you had, you need the, this year, this fiscal year work, okay?
I'm good until, to, I, I, I need money for July, July through June.
Next, or July or twenty-five through June twenty-six.
Yes, and so, so I'm good, I'm good this year. We recovered this year because ODOT gave us a, uh, a, a grant to cover the match for this year for Madison.
So you're good till this July?
Yeah, I'm trying to get, kind of things here, so.
And when you say this July, do you need to have that, um, I'm asking really dumb stuff, do you need to have it on seven one, if you need to have that money?
I, I think we're having to develop it at some point during that. I need a fund. I need a fundance and, and even if I get it sorted.
Because I would also look at, um, some, when, when we first transitioned to FMT, I gave, donated a couple of our G and our drivers to, to, and I believe two of them are still working. Yeah, two of my drivers are still, you know, and, uh, which, we could look also if, at the end of the year, capital budget wise, see if there's anything left that we can help offset. Uh, that's why I was asking the timetable, um, offset some. Um, you know, it wouldn't be a lot, I think twenty or something like that, but something to, because I really feel, with the folks that I work with, um, FMT has been just game-changing. For those disabilities, to be able to get, just to get to Walmart. I mean, is, is game-changing. And a lot of our folks walk, you see them, you see them out walking around. And now on days when it's twenty below or it's pouring rain, they call FMT. Back to an eighteen-year-old kid, and we have, well, she's an adult now, but she's being raised by her special needs uncle, she works at Kroger. She has got Mooton full-time, she uses FMT every day. And she has no way to get there and they, I mean, she's got about a mile and a half walk, which she walked. But she uses FMT and pays a dollar every day, one-way trip. And, but she doesn't know what she would do if someone happened to FMT. Any consideration would be great, but I think we need to, we are to reach out and we reach out to the mayors, whatever. You know, a lot of helping, West Jefferson, different things. Let's see if we can get some help from them as well. So this is not given all to us ask, but just to make you aware of what the ask is.
I was just looking at some, some numbers and, and, and this is just me. I'm not doubting that there's a need and I'm not doubting that this is a good idea. Okay, none at all. But for the nine months, we had thirty-five hundred people use the, the service, right? So for another three months, let's say, if to make it a full year, we had another thousand. And that would be forty-five hundred people that would use this service for a full year. If you divide forty-five hundred into a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, that makes each ride cost us forty-two dollars. Minus the dollar that, you know, I don't know, that they paid for the ride. So it would be an average of about forty-two, forty to forty-two dollars in a ride. Some people only go a few miles, some people go three miles, some people go a half a mile, that's, so. I'm just trying to get my, hey, that's expensive, isn't it?
I think, I, I, I guess you've got to realize we're, in, in, in our budget, we have to pay everything.
I, I, I know, oh, I know, I know.
You know, to try to keep it down, that they're not paying hardly anything. And, and I realize what you're saying, but what we're trying to do is build that and every month we are. Every month we're getting more and more.
And, and then I also tried to figure out really quickly on the hundred hours a week that's invested in the county, you know? Uh, and I, I went to twenty-five dollars an hour, you know, to, to take into account, uh, you know, make, move, uh, insurance vehicle. You know, I know it's fifteen dollars an hour you pay the person, but I went in additional ten dollars an hour to accompany, you know, insurance, uh, working as cop and all that, that, that's included. So I went to twenty-five dollars an hour, um, which would bring it to twenty-five hundred dollars a week. Uh, which is ten thousand a month, which is a hundred and twenty thousand a year. If the county were to, let's say, just pick that part up. It's still not a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. I'm just trying to make sense of these numbers.
Can I kind of give that?
And I like simple numbers, I don't.
No, we're trying, we're trying to build. There, I, I'm being asked constantly to expand those out.
Yes.
You know, and I, I can't do that with, without, without raising that money.
And, and me being the steward of what I do here.
Yeah.
I have to bring that up to clear my mind, you know, and I still, you know, forty-two dollars per ride, does, do we just pay a cab to pick them up for ten dollars? All right?
You can't rent a cab.
I, 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 I know that, I know that. I know. Just not saying this, this is a great thing. I'm not saying it isn't, but it needs.
But I think you're looking at what we've done in these first nine months and we're looking at where we're trying to get to. You, you know, if, if we're going to, we, we can't grow at all. If we, we can never expand to those out.
You're saying the one eighty-nine number is, is accounting for, instead of transporting three hundred and forty-seven, you've added up to five hundred. You've increased the number of trips that, yeah, for, for the next year, based on what the, the growth would be.
And I could, I could have seen that.
Yeah, and to that way, that's why the number, it, you know, based on July through current wouldn't necessarily. Because I agree with you a hundred percent, because we've got the same conversation. Um, but I think you built in growth of X percent over the next year that we will see because every month it keeps getting higher and higher, who's using it?
So we do get more and more calls every month as more people are becoming aware of this option, so people are interested. Um, we live in a very rural community, so it's hard to get the word out to everybody that this is an option. And that's one of the roles that I need to fill, you know, to get out there and that's what we're trying to do, to just get the word out. So we are seeing an increased number of interest and, you know, we can't predict what it's going to be in the future necessarily. But there's over four hundred and forty households in Madison County that does not have a vehicle. They're considered zero viable household. So, you know, I understand, see the need and the numbers may not make sense to you, but this is definitely something that I think is one of the most thing in for our community. And, and, you know, we're going to see a lot of girls in Madison County over the next few years as far as population. More and more people are going to move into here, so. You know, people just consider supporting this, anyone who can, I think that we can feel the benefit of the residents, you know?
I'm not, not considering that support.
Yeah, I get that. I, I, I will tell you that, that Madison County is, is built very differently than Fayette County. And, and I worked very hard at trying to come in and, and meet your cul, the culture of Madison County because the cultures are different and, and I don't like coming over here and telling you, if trying to make Fayette and make Fayette Madison. But the, the distance that we have to travel for some of these trips is, we've gone over twenty-five thousand miles. So, you, you know, that, that is another expense. And you put them in a cab and it's, in, in Washington Courthouse, it's seven dollars when they get in. And it starts ticking from there. So that's, the, the miles that we're traveling is, is a lot in Madison County. But I, I'm not understanding what you're saying. I, I get it and I expect you to be a good steward of your money. Um, but I, I just know that if we're going to build. Um, but I I just know that if we're going to build and we're going to get the hours that. We're being asked to to run. We're we're gonna have to. That's, that's why our goal is what it is.
If it was a program you would consider uh, supporting, we could require. Similar to the Humane Society, uh, quarterly reports with fellowship and miles and. Costs and so forth and so on, that I review and I'm for a reason.
Another figure I'd be very interested in is mileage for each of these categories. So. Obviously, we see the biggest category is work. But what is, what's the mileage? You know, is is there a category that's disproportionate, disproportionately high mileage wise?
Yeah, and I will, I will tell you that I'm not working that down, but I will.
You know, for instance, shopping, like, okay, I mean, but if if that's the highest mileage, people go and enjoy rides from Mount Sterling to Plain City and that's. Is there a way to address that? Or I, that'd be good to see, be good to.
I and I, I would say just uh, just from my knowledge of what we're doing, I would say most of it is for employment. And second would be the medicals.
Yeah, and that that your numbers say that, but I'm just curious to know, how does the mileage?
Um, I don't think we've ever taken any, I think all of the shopping. Um, I I know maybe we're also, but I think the shopping is often within London.
Yeah.
So that would mean that that there's not a lot of violence taken.
Sure. And I like people spending money in Madison County. I'm not saying that, you know, that's not a good thing. I just. It'd be insightful to know. And then the other thing is if you could share Fayette's numbers as well. Um, I'm just so we can see, that'd be good.
Sure. Would you like this separated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and I I will will tell you that like, um, and this isn't. Maybe what what you're really looking at, but this is what um, pulls up my heartstrings. Seniors to to visit their significant other in nursing homes. And um, to think they don't have a way to get their. Heartbreak to me.
It is.
I I I just lost seniors. So um, you know, there are those kinds of things. So when you're looking at the at the senior center or the social stuff. That's some of what that is, um, is getting people to those kinds of situations.
And Tony, just for some perspective, of the value of transportation that we use for DGFS. Um, a regular van um, for someone is twenty four dollars and thirty cents a pickup fee that's charged both times. First trip and second trip, plus two dollars and eighty cents a mile. That's the regular van. For a wheelchair van, it's forty two thirty pickup fee, charged twice, plus three dollars and seventy two.
This is a deal.
Oh, well, well, transportation's never a deal, trust me. We've been ran in a long time. However, I mean, that's the contract that we currently have in place. It is expensive when you're dealing with tires and just the maintenance of them and the revolving vans, the repurchasing of new vans and things like that. So. I just wanted to read those numbers to you and put it in a little bit of perspective that it isn't, that's not out of the realm of, that's not crazy.
So what do you spend a year?
That's my contractor. I was texting my fiscal person and asking Susan, math's not my forte, um. This is one hundred percent federal reimbursement through Medicaid, so technically it doesn't cost Madison County anything. But, I mean, we have that.
That's why they get charged so much.
That is, well, we did a competitive bid, an RFP, and we had five different contracts and this was our best deal. But it was to share when you said forty five, I think, a person, forty five dollars, forty four dollars, whatever, I thought. Yeah, that does sound like a lot. Maybe I wanna go in the tra- transportation business, but. When I was like, so I texted my fiscal person to say, what are we paying for Medicaid and and what Susan, Reggie, what are those rates? So. It is expensive.
It is expensive. Well, and they're just getting ready, I'm sorry, they're the. FDA just threw some additional stuff at us, so I I just got rid of, I I took three vehicles out of. Out of our fleet and I'm selling them because they require a CDL driver. And they're making us go to a um, a five million dollar umbrella for CDL vehicles. And I said, we can't afford that. It's gonna be ten, that you see the insurance, it's gonna be ten thousands of dollars more for that. And so. Trying to be a good steward as well, I I said, we're not doing it. We're taking them out and I've got a brand new, a brand new bus sitting in my garage. Um, that has less than a hundred miles on it from where they just brought it from the factory. And I, we're we're not driving it, we're selling that bus and getting something smaller. Um, it was being built before we lost the sugar contract. Um, and so uh, but they always go from one million to one point five million. Um, so um, I'm spoiling my back foot right now. And and that's the kind of stuff that, that's the kind of stuff that jumps these platforms.
The other thing too is we we try, she stores her vans at my, out in my. I don't know what just happened there, but um, at one, on my campus. And we also use our fuel pump that is our bulk rate for gas, so she, their vans do use ours to, um, so she's not paying retail price for gas. To make it as cheap as we can possibly make it for the uh, for the mileage, cause there's a lot of mileage. And um, but so she, she runs a pretty tight ship when it comes to making a penny go as far as it go.
We have come to our work also on hiring Madison County people. Our employees that we hire are in mass, we've had to have a couple of day county. People hired, or we got so many people that we've got to, we've got so many trips that we've got to have help on day, maybe someone's sick or something. Um, these though have been some day county, but that will basically is Madison County people. And I'm getting ready to interview another Madison County man. Tomorrow, so.
Very good. We appreciate it. And we'll take this into consideration as, as Tony said, we'll just back up what he said. I mean, we see this as a valuable, very valuable. Program for the community, but it's getting people to work, it's getting people to essential. Medical appointments, so we definitely see the value in what you do and we appreciate what you do. We'll take this into consideration, make a decision soon.
Okay, we'll offer a comeback as it gets closer um, to just getting more updates and different things like that and others, things. Costs and all that kind of stuff as, and different contracts that you'll get.
Yep.
So we'll see what, I think you bring that number down. So if you will let me know what kind of information you want, I'll make sure you start getting that.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else for the given order? There is none, meaning adjourned.